This meeting is hereby called to order. Today's date is March 29, 2022. Time is 6:35 PM. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. Roll call. Ms. Castro.
Here.
Mrs. Wyatt.
Yes.
We'd like to welcome you all to a town hall. And this meeting interesting and informative. We thank you for taking the time to attend. Please be advised that this and all meetings of the board are open to the media and public, consistent with the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231, laws of 1975, and that the advance notice required therein has been provided to the Courier-News, Star-Ledger, and Tap into Plainfield on Thursday, March 17, 2022, to be advertised on Friday, March 25, 2022, and also provided to the Plainfield Public Schools, the district's website, the Plainfield City Clerk, Police Department, and Plainfield Public Library for posting. Madam President.
Thank you, and thank you, everyone, for joining tonight's informational town hall, whether you're in person or online. I hope you get good information today and you're able to use it to the best of your ability. I will turn it over.
Welcome to the Plainfield Board of Education Town Hall on District Roles and Responsibilities, specifically the role of the Plainfield Board of Education members and the role of the superintendent. We will share a lot of information with you this evening regarding our roles and the chain of command and the district administration. We're gonna, I'm gonna go over, actually, before we present, we actually have a video to show you guys, and then we'll get into the presentation that we have to present.
Like, the specific definition? No, I know that they-
I don't have any sound for the video.
Like, the specific definition?
All right, please provide us one minute for, to correct the sound issue that we're having. Thank you. While we're waiting on sound, we'll just go over the agenda. So tonight, we're gonna have welcoming introductions by all board members that are present. We're gonna go over the district roles and responsibilities, the Board of Education, the chain of command, the ongoing town hall sessions, of which we plan to host for you all with vital information coming from the district. We'll have a portion of the meeting where we do questions and comments, and then we'll have closing remarks. Our goal is to inform parents, guardians, and the community on the duties and responsibilities of the Plainfield Board of Education. I think we're ready for our video.
Like, the specific definition? No, I know that they, like, reside over all the stuff that goes on within the district, but that's about it.
Not really, but I do know that they sort of oversee the education in the public schools at Plainfield.
That's a hard question. I know it has to deal with budget.
The role of the Board of Education has many responsibilities. There are many moving parts.
I have a vague idea of what it is and what it does, but I don't know who's on it.
Just kind of, almost you could say managing, or like, kind of overseeing the different changes and decisions. But I do know that they have a building up the road, so I don't know if that's worth anything. I know all of them. I don't really know what they are, to be honest.
I believe the Board of Education is a group of trustworthy individuals who are appointed by their community and share the belief that all students can and will succeed.
Be on the lookout for anything that could go wrong in the school, and just be, like, guidance.
And manage budgets, oversees curriculums, uniform policy.
To me, the primary concern, primary role of the Board of Education should be concern for our children.
I think the district should be, like, hands-on with what's going on, like, within the schools and, like, just within the district.
As a community advocate, I can say to you that the role at the Board of Education is integral in the success of the education for the children in the Plainfield Public Schools.
All right, thank you for that. So as you can see, we have a video that presented the way that some of our students here in the district feel, and some of our staff members and members from the community, how they feel about what our role is as the Board of Education. Some of the things they hit on the nail, and other things fall under the roles and responsibilities of other members of our district, maybe our superintendent and the administration, and maybe simply just our staff. So we're gonna dispel some of those myths a little bit, and then we're just actually gonna speak to the facts. All of our information is from New Jersey School Boards Association. We didn't make any of this up. We're gonna just go through it with you guys, but first, we're gonna introduce ourselves. We're gonna start with our board president, Ms. Jaslee Castro.
Hi, I am Jaslee Castro. I've been on the board for about two years now, and I am the current board president.
My name is Hanae Wyatt. I am the board vice president. I am newly elected to the board as of November. I'm excited to continue to serve you guys as a board member here with the Plainfield's Public School District. Again, I just wanna say to you guys, I hope you obtain a lot of information this evening. We're gonna try to continue to provide you with good information, pertinent information coming from the district, so that you all are well-informed. We feel like communication is key, and that's one of our main goals here. Next, we have Ms. Lynn Anderson-Person. If you could please introduce yourself.
Hi, and thank you for coming tonight. My name is Lynn Anderson-Person. I'm a school board member, Plainfield Public Schools, and I've been a school board member for six years. I am very excited to be here tonight.
Can you guys please, oh, excuse me, Lynn. Can you guys please put up Slide 3 with the board members, and then we can continue from there? I'm sorry, Lynn, I just wanted them to put a face to the name.
That's okay.
Okay. Go ahead, Lynn.
Hi, again, Lynn Anderson-Person, board member, Plainfield Public Schools. I've been a board member for six years. I'm very excited to be here tonight with my fellow board members, so we can help to explain a little bit about what we do, what the administration does, but for me, the key point is, tonight, hearing from you and hearing what you have to say and any questions you might have. Thank you.
Next, board member, Ms. Pat Henry.
Hello, welcome, everyone, also those who are familiar. I am, this is my third year, and I- Can you hear me now? Sorry about that. Thanks for coming tonight, and also those who are tuning in virtually, thanks to everyone. This is my third year, and I'm very excited to be here. I am a retired teacher. I taught at Plainfield High School. Well, I'm not gonna tell you how many years. That would denote my age. But anyway, I'm very excited to be here. I'm an advocate for students. For all the years I was a teacher, and I am still an advocate for students. So, welcome tonight, and listen to what we have to say. Thank you.
Ms. Sarah Virgo.
Hi, everyone, I'm Sarah Virgo. I am also newly elected. I joined the board officially in January of this year. I'm really excited for this event tonight. I think it will provide a great opportunity for us to educate the public a bit on what our roles and responsibilities are, but to also, as fellow board members said, learn more about your, you know, concerns and what you'd like us to be aware of within the district. Thank you.
Ms. Carmen Cita-Pal.
Hola, me llamo es Carmen Cita-Pal. I thought I'd try that out. Do we have anyone that's translating, by the way? Oh, no? Okay, so I'll do it myself. No. This is, oh, yes, okay. This is the beginning of my sixth year on the board, and I am excited to hear what the city of Plainfield wants to know and what they have to say about the school board. Thanks for attending.
Mr. Victor Webb.
Good evening, everybody. Thank you to everyone who's tuned in virtually and here and present. I'm Victor Webb. I am a new board member. I'm really excited about the opportunity to serve on the board and also serve the community. Looking forward to hear all the feedback and the questions that the community has. Hopefully, we can answer them, if not tonight, in future sessions. So thank you so much for coming out.
Okay, so next, we're gonna have our board president, Jaslee Castro, go over a few slides with you guys. Each board member will go over a few slides, explaining the roles and responsibilities, and providing the information to you before we begin to answer any questions and receive any comments from the public.
Thank you, Vice President Wyatt. Can we please go to the next slide? So, very important, this slide here is pretty much the structure of the Plainfield Public School District and the relationships and relative ranks and positions and jobs. As you can see, at the top, we have the superintendent, Dr. Diana Mitchell, who sits here to the left of me, and I'm not gonna go through every diagram on this slide, but you can see that from her position, there's other positions that branch off, and this is pretty much the hierarchy of the organization. If we go to Slide 5. The next slide. You see, we put pictures to the names, so you'll see her cabinet to the right of her. We have Mark Williams, who's the assistant superintendent. We have her confidential secretary, who's Phoebe Mitchell. We have our director of human resources, who is Carletta Jones. Our business administrator, Rashawn Hassan. Our community relations liaison, Gloria Montealegre. And lastly, we have Yvonne Brusaz, who's the director of research, planning, and education. And then to the right of them, you have your principals, from high school to middle schools and down to the elementary schools.
Thank you, board president Jaslee Castro. The next slide, please. So myself and Ms. Henry are gonna go over this slide that contains information regarding the board's role. Here at the top of the slide, you see a quote from the New Jersey School Board Association, "A good school board does not run the district, rather it ensures that the district is run well." I think that is very important, because it is our role to work with every other party within the district, the superintendent and her cabinet, as well as the teachers and the staff, and working for the students to ensure that all decisions are made in the best interest of the district and that we move the district forward productively and efficiently. So I'm gonna say that as a board, we need to embrace a united belief that all children can learn and achieve at higher levels. That's one of our main goals. I know here you see it says determine a mission. We determine the overall mission of the district. We don't create the mission, the mission is set, we just help to make sure that it's executed. We plan, we approve the district goals and plans, we monitor, oversee district programs, communicate. That's one of the main reasons why we're here. I said in the beginning of our program, that communication is key. Communicating the district goals and performance to the community, as well as all pertinent information to the community. It's important that you guys know what's going on, that you're well-informed, because when you elect us into office as elected officials, you're trusting us to carry out the plan of the district. And with that, we have to make sure that the communication is there between us and you guys, so that you continue to entrust in us to do so. We are committed to training and professional development. We continue, we are on the way to a board conference, myself, the board president, and another board member, to get some important information that we could bring back to the district and hopefully use with our fellow board members to move the district forward. We adopt policy that support improvement in important initiatives throughout the district. So that is one of our main duties, is to adopt policy and to create different policies that our district can benefit from. We allocate funding for an alignment of the resources needed to advance student achievement. So it is our role to vote on funding the proper programs, the proper initiatives that are brought to us and recommended by our superintendent. The superintendent is our only employee. We do not employ the remaining employees of the district. They are employees of the superintendent and the district. I'm going to, I just also wanna point out that we are a nine-member team. We work closely with the superintendent. It is our job to help ensure that her recommendations are carried out, just as long as they make sense for the district, and they work with moving the district forward, and they are in the best interest of the district. We, again, we determine policy. Policy is establishing broad governance for the district, so that's how we govern, with the school board. I'm gonna turn it over to Ms. Pat Henry. Ms. Pat Henry, who is going to also go over a few other roles of the school board with you guys.
We must understand the code of ethics, which the code of ethics is set by the School Ethics Commission of the state of New Jersey, and that's 18A, 12 to 24.1. We must uphold all the rules and regulations and the policies of the state board.
We just ask that you guys not yell out. You can raise your hand, and then we'll answer any questions or respond to any comments, okay? Thank you.
Okay. So we must understand the code of ethics, which is set by the New Jersey State Board, the School Ethics Commission. It's 18A, 12 to 24.1. We must uphold all the rules, regulations, and policies of the state board. We must always make decisions in terms of the welfare of children. We must always confine our board action to planning, appraisal, policymaking. Also, also, we must monitor district finances. The business manager, Mr. Hassan, does a great job of giving us reports in a timely manner every month, and we go over and we discuss. So we always, every month, monitor our finances. As far as local control, we know, we must, really, the superintendent also does that with us. We make sure that everything is integrated in the community, that the community knows what we're doing, and that effectively communicate within the community. And the last one, self-reflective. We must always reflect. We must always think about what we're doing in the best interest of student achievement. We must always think about other ways that the district can improve. Those improvements, we work with the superintendent on any recommendations. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Henry. I also just want to add that, as a board, we serve as advocates for building the community support for student achievement, and it's our responsibility to monitor progress toward the district goals. So that's another way in which we work with the superintendent. She carries out the goals, but we monitor the progress of the goals. If you reach an individual board member, our response is most likely gonna be to refer to the chain of command. The next slide is about the superintendent's role, and then we'll break down what the chain of command is, but as board members, we don't have the authority or the wherewithal to address, solve, or correct any individual concerns or requests. So a part of this meeting is to just, town hall meeting, is to just make it clear that we have a specific role within the district, we are advocates, and we are to carry out our roles accordingly. However, when you come to us individually, which often happens, we have a protocol that's in place that we have to follow, and there is a chain of command. So we're gonna at all times adhere to that chain of command, and we're gonna encourage you to adhere to the chain of command as well. So with that said, I'm gonna move on to the superintendent's role with our next board meeting, our next board member, Ms. Sarah Virgo.
Thank you, Mrs. Wyatt. As my colleagues stated, the Board of Education and its members, we're responsible for determining the goals, the vision, the mission, different policies. So we're really determining the, the, the quote, what, whereas the superintendent is really responsible for determining the how. Our superintendent, Dr. Diana Mitchell, really assumes responsibilities that are much more specific and serves as a chief advisor of sorts to the board and to the community. That can include leading strategic planning initiatives, implementing board decisions, like I discussed earlier, such as policy, budget, communications, personnel, making sure that the community, the board, the staff are all informed of any recommendations, actions, progress, adjustments, and so on, and then again, recommending actions based on her day-to-day operations, utilizing data input and different resources. There is a constant evaluation and monitoring of the effectiveness of different, you know, performance improvement initiatives or different policies. So any of, all of the evaluations are brought back to the board, so we can make informed decisions as well. The superintendent, like others mentioned, is the Board of Education's only employee, so we work very closely together, analyzing the need for new initiatives and working with her for feedback on the policies that we've put forth. I think it's important to remember that, for the board, we don't like to take any action without really getting recommendations from the superintendent, and the superintendent is really responsible for keeping us informed at all times. Another thing to keep in mind is that there's a fine line between the roles of policy setting, which is what the board is responsible for, versus the running of the schools, and that's what the superintendent is responsible for. Before I hand it over to the next speaker, just wanna remind everyone that a lot of this information is also available on the New Jersey School Board Association website, and there are a lot of resources there. So if there's anything that isn't addressed tonight, we're going to go over some additional information, but that's an absolutely wonderful resource if anybody has any additional questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Sarah. We're gonna go to the next slide, please, and Mrs. Carmen Cita-Pal is going to provide you with information regarding the next couple of slides on the board, the breakdown of the board and the superintendent and our roles.
Good evening, once again. So, that slide looks very, very complicated, and I'm going to take that complicated slide and make it a little bit more understanding. As you could see in the slide, well, first of all, the, at the very bottom, where it says a relationship built on trust, that should actually go on the top of the two right-hand columns. So, and both of those, at the beginning of both of those columns, you'll see a relationship, and then it says roles and trust. And after everything that my colleagues have said, you take all that they have said about the superintendent and the board, and you put it together, and that is what this slide is about. And it's a, it's the relationship. So you have a positive, once you have a positive, effective board-superintendent relationship, it's critical to the success of a school district. So this sets the tone for the entire school community, starting from the administrative team to the instructional staff, the parents, and the students. So that's basically what this, this, this is what this slide is about, in addition to what was already stated about the board's role and the superintendent's role. The superintendent recommends, and the board approves. And if you see on our agenda, you will always see where it says, "The superintendent recommends, and the board approves." So again, with the whats and the how, the board is the what, and the superintendent decides how it's going to be done. And as you can see, the board is about the vision, the mission, the goals, and the policies, and then the superintendent is about the objectives, the strategies, action plans, and the procedures. So that is that simplified. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Pal. We have board member Eric Andrews, who just entered our meeting, so I'm gonna allow him to introduce himself, as we did in the beginning of the presentation.
Let me first sort of apologize to both my colleagues, as well as to the public. I'm running a little bit late today. My name is Eric Andrews. I am now an educator in East Orange School District, former Plainfield, proud former Plainfield graduate from K through 12, and a lifelong resident of Plainfield, New Jersey. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Andrews. We're gonna move to board member, Ms. Lynn Anderson-Person. She's gonna speak to you all about the board of, board members as representatives, as well as information on some annual goals and how we collaborate. So, Ms. Lynn Anderson-Person.
Thank you very much. Okay, so the slide that you're looking at right now states Board of Education. So the Board of Education for Plainfield Public Schools consists of nine members. These nine members are elected each year by the Plainfield community. And so, to give you an idea, anyone who is interested that resides in the city of Plainfield that wishes to sit on the Board of Education, you would be allowed to become a member. There are qualifications that the state of New Jersey sets forth, and they're simply being able to, number one, read and write, hold U.S. citizenship, and a one-year residency in the school district, be registered to vote in the district before filing your nomination petition. You cannot have any interest in any contract with the board, or you cannot have a claim or a lawsuit against the board. You could not hold office as a mayor or a member of the municipal governing body, or in the case of a county school district, it says the county governing body. That doesn't apply to Plainfield here. You're not allowed to simultaneously hold two elective offices, and you would be disqualified from membership if you were convicted of certain crimes. And then they do a thorough background check. So it's, it's not that complicated if someone has an interest and you are a part of this community. and you would like to give back in support of the kids, the elections occur every year in November, and you would simply fill out a petition, which is due by July, the end of July. You can run as an individual. You can run with a team of people, usually three people. And you would put forth to the community what you would like to do. You will find throughout this board and with boards around the state that school board members represent teachers. They represent, you know, different people from, with different backgrounds, college professors, people who work in banks, parents. You'll find a lot of parents will sit on boards of education. You'll see a lot of retirees who have, you know, want to give back, and they have the time available to do so. So we will encourage you, because there's an election this year. If you have any interest, you can go on the New Jersey School Board Association website. There is a tab for interest in becoming a new school board member with videos and detailed information to give you an idea of what to expect. And again, as my colleagues have said, as a board member, our responsibilities are, we do not run the district. We hire a chief school administrator or a superintendent to run the district. And it's our job as school board members, since the public has elected us to sit here. And if you can kind of imagine it, you know, we have over, close to 9,000 students in our school district. And so those parents, we are basically sitting here advocating on behalf of those parents and for the community. So the concerns that parents would have, the concerns that community members would have, they would share those with us. And it's our job as board members to hear that, because the superintendent can't physically be everywhere. So we have to be the ears of our community and take what we hear and bring that information back to the administration so that they'll have a sense of what's going on and hearing from the public. And so that just gives you a quick overview. Annual responsibilities, there's a calendar list of things that board members, once we get on the board, we're responsible for January through December. Certain things that the state of New Jersey requires us to do. Everything from reviewing, approving the budget annually, every year, policies, our colleagues have said. And importantly, our job is to make sure that we are monitoring and overseeing what's happening with our only employee. One of the board members alluded to that before. When we are elected, we only have one employee. That is the chief school administrator that reports directly to the Board of Education. Everyone else that works for the Plainfield Public School District reports to the superintendent. So that's when we were talking about chain of command, how that would work. Meetings, the meetings that occur with the Board of Education, we have two here in Plainfield. It does vary depending on the city that you're in. But Plainfield, we have two meetings. One is called a work and study meeting. In that meeting, we would receive the information from the administration after the board president meets with the superintendent. They are making recommendations, superintendent is making recommendations to this body for things that they would like us to approve. So the board's responsible for reviewing that. It's called an agenda. And once we do that, we'll come and we'll meet, and you see us in the meetings, you see us on TV. And we're going through methodically what the district is recommending to us. And our job is to ask questions until, we ask questions to gain understanding so that we can each decide how we'd like to vote on a particular issue. And then there will be a majority of five members in terms of being able to move something forward. And then we have a business meeting. That would be the second meeting, where the board would just be finalizing everything that was approved for that month, that we moved from the work and study meeting to the business meeting. And that's the business of what we do each month. We maintain that with the use of Robert's Rules of Order. That is simply a tool that's used to run a meeting. It's, it's used by school boards, it's used by virtually any organization, sorority, fraternity, corporation, to try to keep order with respect to the flow of the meeting. And that's what this school district has chosen to adopt each year in January when we reorganize. If you look over at the bubbles to the right of the screen, you'll see four circles. The district goals are something that we do collaboratively with the superintendent of schools. So we will meet each year, and that will typically be around the time that we're evaluating our superintendent. And we will establish with the board, with the superintendent collaboratively, the district goals for the upcoming school year. And that allows the superintendent to understand what the goals are that we're expecting her to hit for the next school year. It will be her job at that point to take those district goals and go back to her team, which will represent every single school building, principals, supervisors, and put together a plan to execute those district goals. It's our job as a board to monitor how well the district is doing towards hitting those goals. So we'll be asking the superintendent to give us periodic updates in terms of our progress towards accomplishing those goals. The next one you'll see is board goals. The board, this nine-member body, will meet generally in a board retreat, and will decide our own goals for things in terms of how we want to run our board meeting, goals that we have for ourselves so that we can become a stronger, better body. And we'll establish those goals. The next one, you'll see CSA goals, as chief school administrator goals. Every year, the state of New Jersey Department of Education requires, contractually, we're required to evaluate the superintendent of schools. And in terms of her, in terms of how well she's doing towards the goals that we've set for her and her leadership in running the district. Again, we don't run the district, the superintendent does. It's our job to make sure the schools are being run well. The last one is merit goals at the top right, and that is connected to the superintendent's contract that she has with the Plainfield Public Schools. Merit goals are additional incentives that we give to superintendents. If they set a goal, and merit goals usually are above and beyond what the district goals are. So if a superintendent, whatever the goals are, exceeds those, then there's, there's compensation for superintendents inside their contracts in New Jersey for that. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Anderson-Person. Next, we're going to have board member Eric Andrews. He's going to go over board superintendent collaboration before we review chain of command.
Appreciate it. So to ensure the board and superintendent are carrying out their respective duties, to maintain the best relationship, each partner should follow some basic guidelines. I'm sorry, did we lose a page, I think? Board and superintendent. So just to begin with, we are, again, the collective body has been described a number of times. At the very top of that collective body sits the Board of Education, again, with one employee, which is our superintendent. Beneath the superintendent, she has her own executive team that consists of assistants, superintendents, human resource directors, among others, responsible for running the overall administration of the district. Beneath that, you will find the building principals, who are very much responsible for running the day-to-day activities and things within side the building. Similar to a corporate structure, you see that triangle kind of goes up. And at the very bottom, you will find the teachers, who interact or at the very front line of education, interacting on a day-to-day basis with your children. Of course, as we point out, the, the teachers are always the first line of communication. If there's any concern or problem that you have, you want to reach out to them. And then following behind that are your building principals, who ultimately have the responsibility of reporting those issues that they see significant enough to the superintendent, who, running the district on a day-to-day, day-to-day basis makes all those decisions. A lot of times when things are reported to us as Board of Education members, we have to recall that, we call that, as we, as Board of Education members, we have to recall that because we do not run the district, when things are reported to us, we often work through providing that information to the superintendent, who then will work with her team in order to filter out those facts and informations that are relevant for her to make her decisions. Again, just following along, parents, guardians, community members will call the school department for answers or to utilize Let's Talk. Again, it's a very important tool for us. It helps us with accountability measures. And that when you use Let's Talk, we know when the message was received, we know who it's going to, and it helps us in the following up of your concerns. The parent guardian member is unhappy with the resolution provided by the school department. They will notify the superintendent's office. Again, we pointed out, our superintendent runs our day-to-day. Again, also, we speak with the principal. If the parent guardian community member is unhappy with the resolution provided by the superintendent, they may contact the board. Sometimes, parents, guardians, and community members will contact the member of the Board of Education requesting action. The board members will refer them to the proper communication channels. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Andrews. We'll now, we'll now have board member Victor Webb continue the chain of command. He's just going to elaborate on what was already said, but he has a presentation to present to you guys.
Well, with all the information we received, it's really important that we know how to apply it practically in our day-to-day lives. So we have a few scenarios that we would like to discuss. Well, we'd like to just present, just to give you an idea how this chain of command may work that way. If you ever find yourself in this situation, you know how to navigate the system. So the first scenario would be, for example, your third grader is having an issue with a classmate. You believe this interaction might be bullying, teasing, it may have been going on for some time. We don't want parents, guardians to go up to the school and address it in proper fashion. So what we suggest is that you use the Let's Talk app, or you would contact the school principal, just go through the chain of command. You want to approach this in a professional way. The Let's Talk app can be found on the school district's website. And with that chain, trail of information, then you're insured to have a follow-up in the right way. A second scenario could be that your middle school student takes the school bus to school every day. On a few occasions, the, the school bus might have been late. There may have been a situation where the school, the school bus never arrived at all, and that could be very frustrating. You want to get immediate answers or find these ways to get this resolved. Sending an email, using the Let's Talk app, following up with a phone call to the school would be the best way. If it's not resolved, then you would take it to the next step, which could be contacting the superintendent. And there, there could be a lot of different scenarios. Some, and Ms. Lynn Anderson-Person mentioned that we're approached by the community members on almost a day-to-day basis. A lot of times, you'll look for answers from us, but we can't provide those answers to you. We're more than likely going to refer you to the Let's Talk app or to the school, to the school personally.
Thank you, Mr. Webb. So we'd just like to, you can move to the next slide, because we'll speak to that in a second. But again, we'd just like to say that the purpose of this meeting was for us to communicate the roles and responsibilities of the board. So we hope that with the information that we've presented, it gives you a better understanding of what our role and responsibility is, respectively, us as board members and the superintendent. We hope that you understand the chain of command so that you can use this information to your benefit to address your concerns and your questions as it relates to issues with your child, if you are a parent, or issues as a community member that you may have. I'm just going to reiterate the app that the district uses, Let's Talk. It's a tool that we do use to communicate. If you are having an issue with not knowing how to use it, or you've had trouble or concerns with not having a response back, then please just reach out to the superintendent. She'll have someone walk you through it, and we can get your questions and concerns answered and addressed. And we do plan to have a series of town halls continuing throughout our time, serving together to address a number of different issues that may arise. If we hear from the public that there are things that you guys would like to have communicated, then that's why we will utilize this meeting fashion. And we would welcome your feedback for town hall topics. If you guys have any topics that you would like us to discuss, then please let us know. If you go to the next slide, please. Before we go to questions and answers, go to the slide after this. We have our information here, which is also on the district website. Each board member's name, email, and board phone number. Again, it is not for you to reach out to us to ask us to solve a personal problem. We do ask that you follow the proper chain of command. However, you can send emails where we're CC'd so that we're informed. We will, again, direct you at all times to go through the proper channel of command, reach out to your principal, reach out directly to the superintendent's office, and they'll direct you to the proper person to address your concern or answer your question. Now, we're going to have a portion of the meeting where we do answer questions and entertain comments from the public. This portion of the meeting will happen in the same fashion as it does with our regular board meetings. We will allow each question, each comment from each community member, three minutes. If you guys need to continue speaking, then we will, depending on the timeframe, allow you guys to continue. If not, then again, you can utilize the information to reach out to us, send us questions directly, and we'll see to it that your questions and concerns are answered and addressed.
At this time, the floor is now open for public comments. Any members of the public who wish to provide comments at this time, if you are present here in person, please approach the dais. Prior to providing your comments, please state your name and address for the record. If you are logged into the Zoom session and wish to provide comments at this time, please click the raise your hand function, and the member of the team will pull you over as a panelist so you can provide your comments. If you are virtual, please turn on your camera so that the board members can see your face. Floor is now open for public comments.
Thank you, Mr. Hassan.
Good evening. My name is Stephanie Jones. I live at 1350 Highland Avenue. I have a question in regards to, I guess, recreation and activity. What is the district's policy on utilizing school facilities for organizations such as cheerleading, or football, or anything in the school? What is the policy? And is that something that taxpayers in the community should be paying for their children to do as members of the community?
All right, so I'm going to just make a comment briefly. The superintendent is collecting the names and information of each of you as you come up. This meeting is about the roles and responsibilities of the board. Although you can question and comment on whatever you see fit, we'd like you to keep it to this topic, keep it to this topic only if you have questions. If you have other questions, we'll see to it that you get answers and that your comments are addressed. Thank you.
Good evening. Sam Seketha Cooper. So based on what Ms. Wyatt just said, this is probably going to be a little bit off-key. I don't mean it to be, though. My understanding of the town hall tonight was for the community to come together and have a conversation about what is needed, required, what we'd like to see, what you'd like to see. So I'm going to say, and it's with no disrespect to anyone here, I really want to thank you for the forum. We used to have these, we used to have round tables, we used to have little sessions so that you could hear from us. So I'm hoping that we can continue. But if we are going to continue, we're going to need to be able to ask questions that may not actually be in the agenda or the forum, because for some of us, this is our only opportunity. We're not familiar with what we're not supposed to speak about or what the timeframe is if we're going to be able to speak again. So this may be our one shot. So please, just keep that in mind, that it's not, to be disrespectful, but we just may not know. Myself, as a community advocate, I was confused. So I apologize if my question or my comment is not in line with what you intended this to be. I just want to say that we're in person again, and I've been here coming back for a couple of times now, and we still don't have a printed agenda. And I don't understand why we don't have a printed agenda for people who may be attending in person, even if it's only one person. I appreciate and was I appreciate and was part of the reason why we have a translation available now. But I don't know what the process is in the event that someone is here and needs assistance with translation. You may have that answer. I'm simply putting it out there for the next meeting. I really love the fact that you had the slide talking about all of the board members, who you are, what your names are, your information. May I suggest that at the beginning of each school year, that be something that is presented to the parents, whether it's via email or whatever type of dissemination process there is for information, that that be a part of that and shows chain of command in the event that you do have some discord or you do need to communicate with your, uh, principal. If you're then not able to get the answer you need, these are the steps to take. Maybe that will be another way that we can show what the Board of Education is, who they are, and what your other remedies are in the event that you haven't been satisfied with your principal. So I like that. And then, I think that was it. I'm hoping that we get another opportunity. I'm hoping that we are able to come together. I don't know if we're gonna do breakouts tonight. I don't, I don't know what I was expecting. But I'm happy that we have it. I wish that there were more people here coming up to the mic and saying hi and introducing themselves because as Ms., um, Ms. Lynn said, I'm gonna say Ms. Lynn. As she said, there's almost nine thousand students. So I just wanna work with you guys somehow to figure out how do we get better engagement so that the parents come out when there isn't an issue and that we work together before the issue. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I just wanna say to you, though, um, we appreciate you coming and showing up to the meetings. We are in person now, and we do have a lack of attendance. We hope to gain more attendance in person and virtually from all community members because that is a valid point. We have way too many community members and over nine thousand students here, so we should have a larger representation advocating for our youth. You guys elect us into these seats to advocate, but we need your help. It doesn't stop with us. So we do appreciate you being here. The committee, our goal, um, is also the same thing that you just said with reaching out, um, marketing us, ourselves more in the district and what we have to offer. So we're just hoping as a, a board and a committee, that you guys can help us get this information out as well. We wanted the flyer to be out for tonight to encourage more participation, and it didn't really bring that the way that we thought it would. But if we had more members of the community such as yourself, I mean, I know you shared it, but such as yourself putting the information out there as well, then maybe we would have a larger turnout. So what you're asking of us is doable, and we're asking the public to do the same with regard to helping us share the information and then continuing to support us as we support you.
You're welcome, and thank you.
Can I make a comment really quick, too? Um, and good to see you. Um, so the principals, they do share the chain of command at back to school night. I believe they get a print, the parents get a handout, but yeah, so that's shared.
That one? And, and I'm, I promise I'm not trying to go back and forth. The, the slide, like the slide that you had with the Board of Education members and stuff?
Yeah, they get a printout.
You know, my daughter doesn't go here anymore, so I'm, I'm out of the loop, but thank you.
Just so other parents can know as well.
Thank you very much.
Point of order. Madam Vice Chair, I did not know that this town hall was only about board, board, uh, board roles. I thought this was, a town hall is a town hall, and a town hall is usually about anything in regards to the school district, whatever questions they may have. So I too am confused, and I'm a board member, that this is only about board roles.
They can ask whatever questions they want to ask, and we can make sure that we provide answers. But the town hall, just like the series of town halls that we plan to provide, are specific to a certain topic, just basically for the simple thing with the limit of time. If we addressed every single issue tonight, then we wouldn't end at eight o'clock. So it's not that we don't wanna hear those questions. We wanna hear them. We're gonna give them answers. But the dialogue should be more focused on what the specific topic of the town hall is. And then we're gonna receive input from the community on what other topics we would like to have, they would like to have town halls on. If this is something, if it just wants to be a general town hall, as long as that's something and within the scope of what we can provide, then we can definitely do that. So I didn't mean for it to be where you couldn't, where they couldn't ask questions. I just wanted them to keep in mind that this particular town hall is focused on the district roles and responsibilities as it relates to us as board members and the superintendent, so that they understand and know the chain of command, so that we can kinda limit what happens generally in our community, because I don't think that they've been provided this information before in this way. And with the committee, that's, that's kinda how we wanted to put it out there.
Okay, I thought, i- if it could be relayed to the board members as well, I'm, I, I mean, I may be the only board member, but I seriously thought I was ready to hopefully get some question, questions answered myself. So if, if you could also let the board know, this, the theme of this is board roles and responsibility only. And the next one, like, uh, student achievement or reading levels or something of that sort.
Yeah, I mean, we've communicated that way. I think it's just the way that each board member may have interpreted it, but absolutely.
Right, and that's how I went out and advertised it as well. You know, this is the chance to come and ask all your questions, get your answers. I did not know that they were gonna come and ask a question and not get an answer today. They could have just gone on, let's talk, let's talk.
No, they'll get an answer. I just, if it was more, we don't have, luckily, and I'm not gonna, that's not in a great way, though. We don't have a large attendance. But if we're, if our goal is to end at eight o'clock, and then I'm speaking to you all as well as my fellow board member. If we are to end at eight o'clock, then we don't, we may not necessarily have the time to address every single question. But if you're up here and you're asking a question, we're definitely going to answer it. We're not gonna tell you, no, we can't answer that question. But if it's something that we can provide to you at a later time, because maybe it's gonna be a little extensive, then that's what we're gonna do.
Well, uh, not to be labor on this, but Ms. Jones, she could have just gone virtually to get her answer, which she came on up here to get a question answered, and obviously is very important to her because, uh, I've never seen her at a board meeting, uh, and she's in my neighborhood. I didn't even see her. So for her to be concerned about the school district, you know, I think that she is due an answer when she asks it at the podium. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
We're gonna send Ms. Jones her information. Ms. Jones, you'll definitely be sure to get your information regarding, uh, utilizing the schools and how that relates to the public and what the protocol and policy is. It's a lot for us to have to provide to you. It, it actually, it's a larger breakdown. So we'll make sure that you get that for sure. Okay?
Madam Vice, Madam Vice President?
Okay.
Good evening. I don't speak English very well. I need to. I'm going to speak in Spanish. Buenas tardes. Yo estoy acá.
Perdón señor, lo dices tu nombre donde vive, por favor.
Okay, mi nombre es Xito Rodriguez. Vivo aquí en Plainfield, la segunda. En la ocho diez, second place. Okay, yo estoy acá hoy porque quiero saber qué tanto saben de lo que pasa en las escuelas.
Good evening. My name is Carmen Salabarieta, from Angeles, for Asian. Sana, you know me, right? Uh, I am here to try to help and I've been involved in, in hand with the families, you know, they come to my place, you know, to Angeles, for Asian. And I tried to be, you know, within. I tried to be within. Now you understand me? You understand what I said before?
Yes.
Okay. So thank you very much for all of you to be here and for trying to put this together for the parents. I think it's wonderful. I congratulate every of you to doing this. And what I would say, and I am involved with the family, but she's so many of the families. They come to my place, they want me to help her out with different issues. And he is one of the special situation that we've been having for a while.
Como decía. Qué tanto saben de la, de lo que pasa en las escuelas. Eh, desde el año pasado, mi niño lo golpearon dos veces. La primera vez, nadie sabía que le había pasado porque andaba con su mascarilla y estaba sangrando de la nariz.
He say, he would like to know what all of you knows about what is going on in the schools. Because last year, his son was, his son was be a, you say beat up, or he was pushed for twice. The first time happened, nobody knows because she had the mask on and he was bleeding. When he, when they called the N F I now what had happened, they say, nobody knows what had happened.
Eso fue la primera vez. La segunda vez, a un niño en una clase lo empujó, cayó por una grada y le quebró la manito. Y según los resultados que mandaron, una, una nota que me mandaron, ahí como que no haya pasado nada, dicen que, que no pasó nada, que, que no hay acoso, que no hay bullying, y mi niño está quebrado de la manito.
He's to say for the second time, his son was pushed, one of the other children, and he rolled into the stairs and broke his arm. And he say, he got a note saying the, they, nothing has happened, everything is okay. And, but his son had a broken arm, so he would like to know what was the situation. Guys, no.
Según la nota, dice que los niños han recibido tratamiento psicológico. Pero en mi caso, mi niño no ha recibido ningún tratamiento psicológico. Él no quería regresar a la escuela porque tenía miedo. Por lo tanto, mi esposa tuvo que pedir cambio de escuela para el niño. Estuvo tres meses fuera.
He say, in his case, they, in the north say, they, they give so poor, mental support for the children and they, for the whole time. They have, he been out of the school four months, this was in December. That's what happened because I've been involved. I went with the doctors, my hand, with the cast put it on in the arm. And, eh, and then I'll say that all the shit been getting so poor. Her son never got any support, any call or anything from the school. He was very scared to go back to the school. He's been very, very scared. The point that he said, I cannot go back to the school no more because they're gonna beat me up again. And they, the parents asked for change to the schools, and they just got the change this week. So he's gonna start it now.
Ms. Carmen, I'm gonna just jump in, cause I don't wanna break in the FERPA laws regarding, you know, students. So I'm gonna ask Ms. Dr. Philipala to take you outside and speak to you regarding your concern. Is that okay? Mrs. Doc, Dr. Philipala, she's gonna take you out and discuss your concern, yes. With the parent. I know there've been three meetings already.
Ella dice.
Okay, thank you.
Entonces quiere que nos pongamos con unos doctores, que va a tomar las notas y lo podemos discutir con el afuera. Say please, lejen y seis antenados. Is that okay?
Yo les traigo mi caso, the, el caso de mi niño, porque, para evitar que pase a otros niños, eh, lo mismo que le pasa al mío.
He just been in front of the board, just because he would like not to happen this to any other children. He no wanted this to happen to any other children, so he wanna make sure that this is gonna happen again. So that's why he been in for all of you.
Thank you, Carmen. Um, I mean, I would like to make a comment because this isn't the first time I hear of cases like this as well, of parents complaining that they feel that they're H I B cases. They go, you know, under the rug. So we hear you. I understand you, and you know, it's, it's not the first time we've heard of something like this. Um, Beth could, um, help you out and talk to you, and yeah, thank you for discussing that with us tonight.
Muchas gracias.
Thank you very much.
Madam.
Thank you.
Madam President?
So Mrs. Stephanie Jones, we do have a building use policy. It's one, three, three, zero. We do have a building use policy. It's one, three, three, zero, and you know, I can discuss it with you if you wanna stick around, if you'd like to. Okay.
But I did wanna make a comment. I didn't know that it wasn't about the meeting, but just because we're here today, um, and you guys were talking about attendance and people coming, like no one took our names. We didn't sign in. We could have, did a Google form check in so that we can get our emails and maybe kinda stay in touch and know what's going on, cause like Ms. Carmen said, I actually was sent a message, like parents comes and open town, I mean, a town hall for the Board of Education. I am a teacher. I don't teach in Plainfield, but my nieces and nephews go to school here. And I was considering bringing my children here. They don't go to school here now. Um, and it's because of the mixed reviews that I've heard, um, about the school district. So I was excited about the town hall meeting. Um, and I, I don't, I don't know how the messaging was put out, but it wasn't that it was about, you know, the order of the board, cause I was like, oh, that's like a waste of time, cause I'm a teacher. But everyone else might need this information. Um, so I do commend you guys for bringing the community in, because I feel like there's a lot of misinformation out there. So just something like to keep us in touch, so we know this meeting is about this, this, you know, cause we do wanna get involved, and I feel like nine thousand kids, like absolutely, this, it should be more people here as opposed to when we wanna complain about something. So thank you for allowing me to approach the podium again.
Yes, thank you very much. Go ahead, Sarah. Ms. Jones and just everyone, this was, this is our first of this series. And so it was kind of designed, I, I serve in the committee, and it was designed in a way where we wanted to sort of figure out what made sense. Um, but I absolutely agree that we, there should be, I, I think sometimes the board meetings are a little intimidating for people, and they don't feel as comfortable perhaps addressing those concerns they have. So this, this feedback is really valuable, and I appreciate you coming out to, to, to provide that. I think we could absolutely, in the future, if it, if it isn't topic specific, perhaps it will just be an open town hall. Uh, so that, that feedback's really important. We just also wanted to establish that framework to say, when we do get, you know, questions or comments or concerns or complaints sometimes, that people kind of expect that immediate action from us, and we wanted to just educate the public on what our limits are, what, what are, what are our responsibilities, what are we able to do, just so people don't think that we're being dismissive or that we're not doing as much. Um, so it was important for us to just educate everyone. Uh, but I absolutely agree. If that's something that we can do as a committee and as a board, I think that's very valuable, and we absolutely hear that feedback. Thank you.
Yes, thank you, Sarah. Okay.
Hello? Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes, we can hear you.
Thank you. Terry Froelich Bell, nine four nine West A Street, Plainfield, New Jersey. Thank you for saying that, uh, last comment, Sarah, I forget your last name, I'm sorry. But the reason you don't have people out in these meetings is because you continue to talk about communicating, but you don't communicate. Hence in point, nobody knew what this meeting was really gonna be. You hear a town hall and you think that you can get, you can ask anything you wanna ask. If your meetings are going to be subject specific, I don't have, I served on the board, so I don't have a question on the roles of the board. But I may have another question. So I need to know, or when is, when is your next town hall gonna meeting, meeting gonna be? What is gonna be the subject? Because if I can't ask my question and get an answer, which you know, I ask questions at every board meeting, and I have yet to get an answer from anything. And Mr. Williams, you have my cell phone number, you have my email, we've communicated for years. So why no one could communicate with me to answer my question is beyond me. But I think this is ridiculous. I can't ask a question that I need to ask and get an answer at a town hall meeting. I noticed nothing was really said as far as your, your roles. You have one role. Your biggest role is to hire and evaluate the superintendent, but you didn't list that in there. But I understand that, too. Things have changed a lot from, of, of a board member from when I served on the board. We communicated with the public. The public felt as though they, we were approachable. What I heard tonight was that the board members, contact with the board members is basically off limits. Mr. Webb, you gave an example, talking about chain of command. You gave an example of a child being bullied. Using your chain of command, what's the timeframe? And this gentleman that was just here, I'm sorry, I didn't get his name, the Hispanic man. His child is being bullied, and he's got an issue. So if he went through the normal Let's Talk garbage that you guys are talking about, what's the timeframe before he would get an answer and his child would feel comfortable coming back to school? I understand a child not being comfortable coming back to school. That's why I took my child out and put him in pub, uh, private school. And by the way, due to the circumstances, the district pays for his school, his private school, and his transportation. I think if more parents knew that, you'd have less in charter school, less in public school. less in public school and more going to the private schools. And the district would really be losing money. But I get tired of coming to these meetings and being talked at, not talked to. And none of you have an idea what communication means. If you really want to communicate, be honest, open, disseminate information, and make yourselves approachable, all of you from the superintendent down. Thank you.
Thank you. I just want to state before we take any more questions that we would like to communicate in a more open fashion, and we can on some matters. But we are limited to the scope of what we can share, especially with regard to student issues. That was a parent that came up. So it was at his discretion that he wanted to share the personal issue that was going on with his child. But we are not allowed to have a dialogue regarding what happened in the district with regard to his child, nor are we allowed to have a dialogue with regard to how the district, the superintendent and her administration is handling it. So that is why the superintendent sent that particular parent out with someone that can guide him and direct him and work with him to obtain a solution and rectify the matter that is already being handled by the district. The district is aware, but it is being handled. We are not to discuss that with the public. But again, as my colleague said, this is the first meeting, town hall meeting, that we had. And her and I, although we're on the committee, we are new board members. And along with our other board members, we felt like now is the time for us to work together to put town halls together that can address the concerns. So this is the first one. And maybe the way that we wrote this out with regard to receiving questions and answering them is not the fashion of which you guys would like. And we can change that. We can alter that so that it's a little more of a dialogue regarding more broad topics. However, we try to keep the topics themed so that we can better prepare for them. So that when you do come up and ask us questions, that we can provide you with answers on the spot. Because if we aren't prepared, if we lack preparation, then there is no way that you're going to get an answer on the spot. We're going to have to tell you that we'll get back to you with the answer. So we try to theme out the town halls so that we can respond accordingly and that we can also make sure with our legal counsel that it's within the scope of what we can discuss with you guys at an actual board meeting.
Also, I would like to add, so for any questions on HIV, HIV or on facilities, we do have policies and they are available to the public. All you have to do is go on the Plainfield, New Jersey, K12.org website, click on BOE, and then you're going to click on Public Members Login Page, and then you're going to be redirected to Board Docs. And on Board Docs, at the top on the header to the right, you're going to see Policies. So you'll be able to see the policies. And there's numerous policies there that you can refer to if you ever have any questions or concerns.
Okay, so we can go to any more questions we might have virtually or in person? Okay, we have a question here.
Hi, Board. Jennifer Popper. Do I have to say my address? 816 Dixie Lane. I'm not used to being in front. I'm usually behind. But just following along with the theme of communication. I know at the past board meeting or a couple of board meetings ago, there was conversation about work and study and whether or not the public is allowed to engage with the board. That is something that used to take place. I know some of you haven't been here, but personally, I have experienced it where the public has been allowed to ask questions of the board during the work and study meetings specific to that particular agenda. So what was the final ruling, if you will? Are you going back to that? Are you staying away from that?
We haven't thoroughly discussed it yet, but we will. And our next board meeting is April 12. I don't know that it will be on that agenda specifically, but it is something that we're going to discuss in the near future, and we will communicate that with you guys so that moving forward, we can kind of address your concerns at the work and study if that's the way that we're going to do it.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Sekita Cooper. I was given permission to come back. I did ask a question. I want, for those who are watching, this is not the norm for a person to come back in a board meeting. This is not a board meeting, as far as I'm concerned. This is town hall. It's a board meeting? Okay, so it's a board meeting, but we're holding a town hall in the board meeting?
Anytime the board meets in public, it is a board meeting.
Okay. So I want to say it in a way that, for those that are watching or listening, that the normal decorum is you get to speak once and that's it. So I don't want me coming back to the mic, which is out of turn, to be construed as normal practice. So that's why I'm trying to make that point. Again, no disrespect to anyone that's here. It's just that I'm disappointed that there's no like further engagement or just a little bit more back and forth that we would have if this was work and study or a true gathering of the community to discuss concerns. Jen actually brought up a very good point about work and study. As someone who has attended multiple work and study meetings, I can tell you that I felt the most engaged, informed, appreciated by being able to have conversations with all of you and to be able to be heard and have things explained and the reasons why, which I believe is so important. This next statement is not directed at any of you that is here. This is a statement that was said to me that I agree with, and it's come from multiple sources. If there is something that can be put into place as you are doing policies and procedures, and I'm not sure if it comes from the superintendent or if this is a policy that would come from the board, but I and others, and as you know, I speak for others. That's usually why I'm here. There should be a restriction on the board president having to have served on the board at least one year prior to being appointed as the president coming in after winning an election. If you have not been in the city, if you have not been in the audience, you're unfamiliar with the processes and procedures, if you haven't served on another board somewhere, maybe you should learn the ropes, get to know what's going on prior to sitting in the seat. And again, I say this, this is with no disrespect to past or present. This is simply a statement as a suggestion for maybe better fluidity moving forward. Because I'm hearing from some of you that I'm new, which we've all been new somewhere. But as the community member, I don't want to hear that you are new and you're unfamiliar with something because you're new. I don't mind hearing that you're unfamiliar with something because I asked you about something that's out of the norm. I appreciate all of you. I appreciate this forum. And I will agree to disagree with some of the things about how it was rolled out. I'm here, there are others here, you have people online. So somehow, people got notification. There's a little bit of confusion about what it was supposed to be. But we're here. You made it happen. Thank you. So how do we move forward? Because that's really what this is about. How do we move forward to get more people out, to get more conversation, to get a solution on how we all work together? Not five against four, but that I know you all have your own thoughts, but you are a team. And we need to see that. We appreciate you for that. And that's it. So thank you for allowing me to come back up this last time. I just needed to point out those last two pieces. Please consider the work and study for us to be able to have this back and forth because it's extremely important for us. Okay, so thank you again.
Thank you. Two things I want to do to address you and your questions and your comments. Thank you again for your comments, as always. And I'm just gonna, number one, I'm going to ask Hope if you wouldn't mind to address the parliamentary procedures with how the board seats are voted on and how we come to those conclusions. And number two, I just want to let you know that the way that we respond to you is that we take your information in as a community member, a caring community member, and advocate yourself. And then we discuss it as a board and we get it done and we handle it. I mean, that's all we can do at the end of the day. We don't have all of the answers, whether new or old. We're sitting in this seat for a reason. So it is our duty to, our due diligence to do what we need to do to ensure that the public's voices are heard and that we kind of receive it and then make sure that we answer their concerns and get to the bottom of it so that we can continue to advocate.
So when you say public, when you, the protocol question then has to do with how officers are selected? Was that the question? And there actually is no requirement that anyone serve, any member is eligible so that nominations are solicited and for first for the chairperson. That the person who gets the most votes, it does not have to be a majority, actually, is the person who becomes the chairperson. That the chairperson then takes over and nominations are solicited for vice chairperson. And that's how it takes place. There is no requirement. There is no requirement in board policy. There is no requirement in state law. And I don't know I've ever seen a board actually have that as part of their protocol. It is something that's open for all board members. I would say, if I can go a little bit further than that, is all board members are trained through the School Boards Association. They start off with Governance 1. They work, and they work all of their way through. Whenever they have very specific questions, there is, it actually starts with ethics. And ethics, actually, one of the requirements actually during your organization meeting is that you also go through the Board Member Code of Ethics. So that is from the minute they start to serve on the board. I think school boards may actually now even have a before you get sworn in training opportunity. So there's this concept that all board members are created equal. So that's the overall protocol. Was there another question, Vice Chair?
I just wanted that to be clarified. And if you didn't speak on that because my colleague was asking a question and I didn't hear every part, I think just for her clarification, even though there has to be a sense that all board members are created equal, is there a way or some type of policy that can be created that would be able to put that in place? Not that that's something that would happen, but is that a possibility?
I would actually have to look at it because I will tell you, I've not seen it. And I will tell you, in 30 years, I've not seen it. So it's something that I would actually have to look at.
Okay, thank you for the clarification, Hope.
And that was it. Thank you. And I appreciate you guys, truly, sincerely. So thank you.
Thank you.
Excuse me, Madam Vice Chair. Something that you had, I heard you say that it could be the majority of the vote?
No, it doesn't have to be a majority of the vote. That's what I said. Remember, the person who gets the highest number of votes.
My understanding, it has to be five or more.
You know what, I have to fill your policy. Thank you very much. I need to fill your policy.
Yes, it's five or more.
You know, actually, you're right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello? Can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Oh, good evening, everyone. My name is Gisela Penafio. I'm a teacher from Cook. I don't have any question. It's just a quick...
Please state your address, please.
Oh, 60 Rutgers Road, Biscataway.
Okay.
So I don't have a question. It's just a comment. I do follow the Facebook page and also the Instagram page from Plainfield Public Schools. And there was a post a couple of days ago. I don't remember when exactly, but I knew what the town hall was going to be about today. And Mrs. Virgo also shared it on her Facebook page. And I knew what it was. I knew the topic for tonight. I have a screenshot over here and it says, "Do you know what the role of the Board of Education? What are the responsibilities of the board? What do you do if you have a complaint?" And it's in English and Spanish. So I took this opportunity to share that with my families, with my students' parents. I invited them tonight because I kind of like, I wanted them to know what the responsibilities of the board. And I don't know how many attendings we have tonight, but that was a great opportunity for me as a teacher to share with my students, with my parents. So perhaps it's just a suggestion. Maybe for next time, they can put it in the flyer, you know, the topic of the town hall. But I just wanted to say that there was a post on Facebook about the topic of tonight's meeting. That's it. Thank you and good night.
Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. Kathryn Balch, 1314 Highland Avenue. Thank you so much for having this forum, this town hall, this opportunity for the community to come to speak to you and for you to speak to us. I, too, did not understand that the questions, that you were looking for questions mostly or only from about the roles and role and responsibilities of the board members. So I unfortunately advertised it incorrectly. So I apologize to the people who came to this meeting virtually or in person with the impression that they were going to be able to ask anything that they wanted to. So I'm glad to hear that we'll have better understanding of what future town halls will be and so that we can inform people better. I do have a question about the role of or how a board member, it's about voting on a policy or a program. So when board members go to a meeting, and I understand that they have had information that they can refer to before they get to the meeting, but once they get to the meeting, they're asked to vote on a certain policy or program. But if they want, if they need further clarification about what that program or policy is, it's my understanding that they should have gotten that clarification before they got to the meeting. Is that not true? Okay. So a board member could, in all, you know, having done some due diligence before they got to the meeting, but once they're at the meeting, they may need more clarification about an issue. So they could get that at the meeting. And is that, that's what the work and study is all about, correct? So I'm confused about, there was a recent meeting where a board member asked for further information or more information about a program. And the response was that that was not the right place to do that. That the board was not, it wasn't the board's role to proceed in that manner. That the board's role was to vote on, respond to the superintendent's request for a program. It's up to the superintendent to figure out how to implement that program. But my question is, sometimes, how would a board member know how to vote if they don't understand how a program is going to be implemented?
Good questions, good observations. So yeah, so the work and study is really the place where board members can ask questions. We do give board members the agenda, either Thursday or the Friday before that Tuesday board meeting. And we give board members time to look over the agenda
Board meeting, and we give Board members time to look over the agenda and submit their questions, preferably by Monday at nine AM, but sometimes questions come in Tuesday. And the superintendent tries to get answers to all of those questions. Board members feel that their questions haven't been fully answered. They're more than welcome to ask questions at, at the work and study. So we try to, you know, get all the information that we need at the work and study so the executive session could really be to cast the votes. And another reason why we have committees now, so committees, they're going to meet and they're going to discuss and file reports on CNI and finance. And we're hoping that, you know, that kind of, not clears the air, but makes Board members feel a little bit more comfortable with making their decisions. Just because there, there are committees doesn't mean Board members can't, you know, ask questions. If you're in the Finance Committee, you could still ask questions to the CNI Committee if you have further questions. I think that sometimes what happens is Board members can kind of get stuck in, you know, more of, of the how than the what. And there is a fine line, and it's still something that we're all trying to flush out and kind of, you know, understand. Because, yeah, we do want Board members to feel comfortable with making decisions, but we're hoping that, you know, all of those questions can kind of be asked in the work and study.
So, so it's, now it's my understanding that as a Board, that you respond to the superintendent's request for a program for the students. It's up to the Board to decide whether that program holds the possibility to benefit the students. And then it's up to the superintendent to decide with her staff how that program's going to roll out. Now, is the superintendent obligated to present, along with the proposal, the way the proposal is to be rolled out?
So I think when it comes to programs, yes, we can probably, we can do a better job at having more details as to what the specifics are of the programs before having Board members make those decisions. And again, that's something that the committees are now going to take ownership of and making sure that those program details are in place before going out for a vote.
Okay, it sounds like that you've, you've, you've got a very good process in place then. Thank you so much. I'm sorry, if you wouldn't, just give me one little chance. So I will ask this question now because I thought I was going to be able to ask anything I wanted to. But it's, but it's the last one. So I have asked in previous meetings when construction of, or when, what, what's going, going to be done about the Evergreen School? Evergreen apparently is the next to last or the oldest building in the district, and that there, I know that there is a plan to renovate it or, or tear it down and build a new building, but I, I'm wondering if somebody can give me a timeline as to when that process will begin, get speeded up? Any news about it? We'd appreciate it. Thank you.
That's all.
Yes, ma'am. Ms. Balch, the district is currently undergoing a long-range facilities plan. We expect to have the initial draft of that long-range facilities plan within the next 30 days so it can be vetted by the Finance Operations Committee and then presented to the full Board. So at this time, I don't have an exact date or timeline for that particular project, but it is something that's being assessed as a part of the long-range facilities plan.
So you might have a timeline in about a month as to if or when something's going to be done about the Evergreen School?
So what we will specifically have is a list of projects that will take place over the course of the next five years. The construction of a new school is not as straightforward for us. We are, was considered an SDA district, and as a result, the New Jersey School Development Authority, they handle all of the construction projects on behalf of the district. So if we are in need of a new school, that entity actually does the funding, they award all of the contracts associated with that project, and they execute that project on behalf of the district. So at this point, we don't have an application in, for a knockdown or rebuild at Evergreen. We did have a conversation with the SDA earlier this year. We'll continue to have them, but we don't have an approval to build a new school at that site at this point in time.
So, so what I'm hearing is that probably within the next three years, nothing is going to be happening on that site?
Sorry, could you repeat that? My apologies.
Sure, so, so what I'm hearing is, within the next three years, I, I'm asking for, because parents of young children are asking me what's happening with Evergreen School. They're wondering whether to send their child to, to that school or to apply to, perhaps send their child to another school. So, 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 so what I'm hearing is probably nothing's going to be done within the next three years.
So I'm not saying that. I'm saying there's a process that has to be followed, and the first step for us is to develop the long-range facilities plan, and that's where we are. We can't do anything else until that's been completed.
So that's the first step?
Yes, it is.
Thank you, sir.
You're welcome.
Appreciate it. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you. And Ms. Balch, we presented that in the January work and study meeting. We presented that long-range facilities plan, the R I P, in January.
Yes, because I thought I remembered seeing Evergreen as the last or next to last school, oldest school in the district. Right, okay. Thank you.
Madam Vice Chair?
Yes.
Since this is, now that I know, around Board roles and responsibilities and what Ms., Ms., Mrs. Balch had just asked regarding something on the agenda that she wasn't able to get an answer or wasn't able to get an answer during the work and study. So my slide was about the relationships, the roles and the trust of the superintendent and the Board. Now, what she was asking about had to do with me on an item that was, an agenda item that wasn't answered. And then it seemed like I was the kind of like, the bad, bad guy. So just, and then Josley had stated about how we have our agenda and we have time to ask questions, and some Board members get their emails in late, whatever the case may be. We get our agenda on Friday night, and there are times when there's changes by the time we have the meeting on Tuesday. However, with that particular one, during the work and study, I did ask about that item. And I was told that I would get the information. Now, again, the relationship, the roles and the trust. So I mean, it's not all, that relationship between Board and superintendent could be shaky at times. But at that particular time, I did ask my questions way in advance, and I never got my answer. And then, when the meeting came to vote on it, it was a whole different answer. Well, what the, what was a broken answer, let's put it that way, during the work and study, but then during the business meeting was a totally different answer. So again, that's the relationship, in the Board, you have to have a strong relationship. And I believe I had said, a positive and effective Board-Superintendent relationship is critical to the success of a school district. This sets the tone for the entire school community, the administrative team, the instructional staff, and the parents and the students. And so there, that particular item, agenda item, there was a breakdown. So I want to get that clear, since this is a town hall slash meeting regarding the Board responsibilities and roles. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Pal. I think we'll just continue to work on our relationship, our Board-Superintendent relationship. I believe we have one more question queued up, and it is past eight PM, so we're going to try to answer the question this evening with regard to whatever the question is. Nick, is there one more person still?
There's one more. I'm trying to ask. There's not a meeting. I'm going to give them like 10 more seconds.
Okay. All right, so while we wait, we just want to thank everybody again for coming. We're going to try to ensure that with the next set of town halls, we can get those topics out to you guys in advance that will advertise better and that you can assist us with advertising, that on the flyer, we make sure that we have the Board topic there. And again, we also invite topics from you all for us to discuss. Having these dialogue, having this dialogue and these conversations is very important. Again, communication is key. We all need to do better with communication with, as far as the Board is concerned. So we just want you guys to work with us and advocate with us while we advocate for the district. Okay, all right. So thank you again.
Victor has a question.
Oh.
Can we talk a little bit about the volunteerism for the strategic plan? Can we talk a little bit about that, recruiting people? Can we address that a little bit?
Yeah, we actually had one of the staff members passing out flyers and getting names out there when the meeting started. And, and you can also sign up online. That sheet is still online on our website. Please volunteer. We look forward to having you on the committees.
Yes, and again, if you have questions that are left unanswered, you can reach out to the superintendent's office to obtain your answers. If you have concerns and questions regarding personal matters related to a student, please contact your principal.
Can we get a motion to adjourn the meeting?
I make a motion to adjourn.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Meeting is adjourned. Eight sixteen P.